It was awesome. We had a great time.
Good we can be recognized again.
I call to order the regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission, Monday, September 8th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the Anishinaabe, whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and recognize that the three bands of Ojibwe, Saginaw, Black River, and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over 200 years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards of these ancestral lands is an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those ancestors who came before us. We give thanks to the generous care with which the Anishinaabe and those members of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and continue to give to this land in our community. Clerk Schmelzer, will you please take the roll?
Commissioner Al Sager.
Here.
Commissioner Bush.
Here.
Commissioner Pershawbacher.
Here.
Commissioner Rowlands.
Here.
Commissioner Skelitsky.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ake.
Here.
Mayor Wingard.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right. First, on the agenda this evening, we are moving to proclamations and presentations. First item is a proclamation recognizing Mount Pleasant as an international city of peace. And along with this, I would ask Vice Mayor Ake to stand up alongside me as I read the presentation or proclamation.
To clarify, Vice Mayor Ake was a key voice in advocating for this development and this proclamation and recognition of the city's longstanding history as an advocate and community that values and advances peace in the world. So after I'm done speaking, if you wanted to say a word or two. Whereas the city of Mount Pleasant, Michigan is committed to fostering a community defined not by the absence of conflict, but by the presence of justice, compassion, and collaboration. Whereas international cities of peace defines a city of peace as a municipality that proclaims a clear intention to build a culture of peace, encouraging understanding, tolerance, equality, democratic participation, and respect for all community members. Whereas the United Nations recognizes September 21st each year as the International Day of Peace, dedicated to promoting nonviolence, dialogue, and harmony among people and nations. Whereas Mount Pleasant has a growing legacy of peacebuilding efforts led by community organizations, local leaders, educators, faith-based groups, and civic partners, aiming to reduce violence and strengthen social cohesion. Whereas the city commission, mayor, and citizens of Mount Pleasant wish to acknowledge this legacy, encourage current peacebuilding initiatives, and inspire future generations towards sustained and practical peace in our city and beyond. Whereas the city of Mount Pleasant supports our nation's Declaration of Independence, which provides that all men are created equal and acknowledges that we should celebrate and enjoy liberty and justice for every citizen. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city commission of Mount Pleasant, Michigan hereby proclaims Mount Pleasant as an international city of peace. Be it further resolved that in celebration of peace each year, September 21st shall be recognized as Mount Pleasant Day of Peace in perpetuity. Be it further resolved that the Mount Pleasant shall develop and support policies, partnerships, and initiatives that cultivate the values of peace, including education, social equity, community dialogue, cultural collaboration, environmental stewardship, and public wellness. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and great seal the city of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, this eighth day of September 2015.
I am close to tears right now. This is just absolutely, absolutely wonderful, given what is happening in the world around us. So, Mount Pleasant, thank you for committing to honoring peace. We do a lot of things, and this proclamation pulls all those things together. The Isabella County Human Rights Committee will be hosting an event on Saturday, September 20th, at the city center, and the event is Let Peace Reign. The idea is for us to take some time to contemplate how we have honored peace, contributed to peace in our city, to the world in which we live. There cannot be security for any one of us if there is no peace. It is therefore important that we work towards peace, and there are many ways in which we have done that, including the tribal healing, honoring, and remembering events. The events that happened, the flag raising event at CMU in May, recognizing former President Warner's involvement in peace. So, this is a call to us. I don't see it as a challenge. It's achievable. So let's work towards peace. Thank you. Thank you again. I'm gonna go away before I start crying.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, we have the introduction of utility billing supervisor Sean Christie by Finance Director Lauren Pavlosky.
Sean Christie joined the utility billing department as our utility billing supervisor effective Tuesday, September 2nd. Sean brings extensive private sector experience with a strong background in leadership and customer service within the construction and sales industries. Most recently, he served as an instruction administrator with the Great Lakes Bay Construction, where he collaborated with accounting staff and project managers, maintained construction and accounting databases, processed accounts receivable and accounts payable, managed legal documents and project contracts and change orders, and provided staff training and technical support. Prior to that, Sean worked as a subcontractor administrator for the Three Rivers Construction in and in that role, he was responsible for developing and maintaining detailed accounting reports, overseeing subcontractor payment processes, and managing payroll and timekeeping databases. Sean holds a bachelor's in business administration and management through Northwood University, and we're excited to have Sean honored on the city team here and to see what he can help us achieve in our department.
Just wanted to say that I'm thankful for the opportunity. I'm grateful to be here and I look forward to getting to know you all much better. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. At this time, we'll move into additions and deletions to the agenda. First, let's see. I have one addition to make to the agenda this evening. I would like to add number 16. Consider appointment to CBD Tifa District Board for partial term expiring 12/31/29. Let's see. That would be looking to make that item number 16. That would make the work session number 17. See. And then I believe Manager Dissents, you also had an item?
Just one thing I wanted to make sure the city commissioner was aware of. New business. Consider setting a joint work session for the November 24, 2025 regular meeting with planning commission and property owners to discuss alternatives to the proposed map amendment. It says Z2501, and it was actually Z2401. That was a last year action for the five properties located southwest of Crawford and Brumfield.
Yeah, so making that update to the agenda would be Z2401 on item number 15. Are there any other additions or deletions that we would like to make to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I approve it as amended.
I second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Al Sager, seconded by Vice Mayor Ake. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. Okay. That'll bring us to public inputs on agenda items. If you are in the audience and would like to speak on any of the items on the agenda, you may step up to the microphone. You'll be given five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, as well as the item on which you're speaking. If you're here to speak on the public hearings, number item 13, I might recommend preserving your comments till the public hearing. See, is there anyone on Zoom? If you're on Zoom, please use the raised hand function. Gotcha. Are there any emails? Not seeing anyone in the audience rushing up at this time. I'm gonna close public comments on agenda items. And that'll bring us into receipt of petitions and communications. Manager Dissents, if you would.
Received petitions and communications includes the minutes of the airport joint operations and management board from April, council of government's agenda from August, and minutes from June, letters from residents regarding the 2025 master plan updates, and monthly report on police-related citizen complaints.
Do you know about how many letters we received total as far as that process?
There were four of them.
At least four.
Yep, there should be three that were in the packet, and then there should be one on the dies that came in just today.
Okay, thank you. Did you have a question, Vice Mayor?
I have a question, Manager Dissents. How often does the airport joint operations and management board meet?
Typically, they meet monthly as long as there's business for the board to meet, but it's scheduled to be a monthly meeting.
So, given this minute that we just received, it seems to me the last meeting was in April?
That would be the last group of minutes that were approved. I believe the last meeting that they had was in August.
Okay. All right. So there's a backlog in terms of the minutes coming forward.
There were a couple of meetings that I know were missed. So, May, June, and July, I think they had missed some meetings, and I think it was a couple of them were due to a lack of quorum.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions concerning petitions and communications? No. All right. Manager Dissents, if you would take us into consent items.
Consent items this evening includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held August 25th, 2025, receive fall 2025 Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe 2% funding request from city departments, receive proposed 2026 annual operating budget and set a public hearing for November 10, 2025 on the same. Consider resolution to amend 2025 operating budget. Set a public hearing on September 22nd, 2025 to consider adaption. set a public hearing on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five to consider adoption of the twenty twenty-five master plan updates, and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
Are there any items that members of the commission would like moved out of the consent agenda at this time? Any questions or comments? The one thing I'd just like to highlight to the members of the commission is just, again, reminder on the two percent funding requests, we will be prioritizing those at the next meeting, September twenty-second. And as always, it's the annual debate. We are ranking those, in fact, so when the members of the commission read off their requests, we will rank them one through five, not just in any specific order.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Vice Mayor Eke, seconded by Commissioner Rollins. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. Okay. That brings us to our first public hearing of the, and only, public hearing of the evening. Item number thirteen. We will be having a public hearing to consider Oprah tax abatement for one fifteen and one seventeen South University. Before we begin the hearing, I pass it over to Manager Dissence to inform us on what we're talking about.
The owners of one fifteen and one seventeen South University have applied for an obsolete property rehabilitation act tax exemption to apply to those aforementioned properties. The district was created in twenty twenty-one and follows the same boundaries as the central business district. Property owners can apply for the abatement if they meet the criteria set forth in the attached policy. The full application for the exemption is provided in your packet. Approval of the Oprah exemption would freeze property values in place at current levels. As improvements are made by the owner, the property taxes of all taxing jurisdictions would not increase on the new property value until the end of the exemption period, which in this case, this application is for twelve years. After twelve years, the exemption would expire in the city and all other taxing entities would be able to collect taxes based on the new property value. Staff has reviewed the application for the Oprah exemption at both one fifteen and one seventeen. Staff believes that the proposed development meets the goals of the Oprah program by encouraging significant investment in the downtown. Prior to consideration, the city commission will need to hold a public hearing on the proposed exemption. After the public hearing, the city commission can vote to authorize the Oprah exemption as proposed, make modifications to the request, such as limiting the number of years of the exemption, or deny the exemption. I do know that we also have the property owner here. Should the city commission have any questions for the property owner?
Certainly. Thank you. Let's see. With that, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing. If you are in the public and in the audience and would like to speak on this item, please step up to the microphone. You'll be given five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. If you are on Zoom and would like to speak, please make sure you use the raised hand function.
Hello and good evening. I'm Katie Mora, President and CEO for Middle Michigan Development Corporation, and wanted to speak in favor of approval of the Oprah. We have been working with the business owner to be able to ensure that we met the criteria for this particular application, and as this moves forward, we'll continue to provide additional supports in that way. Many of you are well aware that we've been working for many years on supporting the downtown and increasing the vibrancy and the diversity of types of offerings that we have there. And this is one of the tools that we have in our toolbox that we're able to utilize with business owners and building owners in downtown. And we couldn't recommend this project more. We're really excited. Not only is this in a location in downtown on University Avenue that helps to extend the walkability of our downtown, but it also will provide for additional retail in our downtown space, again, adding to that vibrancy that we're really excited about. Additionally, we've also been working with the business owner on some funding through the state. And for those of you who are unaware, typically in order for us to be considered for a state grant or state funding opportunity, we have to have the support of the local community, and this is one way that we're able to do that. So as you discuss this this evening, just know that this is a project where we'll have not just one business, but multiple businesses within the location. We will have two there on that first floor of each of those buildings. But also, this is a particular project where by being able to make it something that is able to be funded through this grant mechanism as well, the project will be completed quickly, and we will have activated spaces on University Avenue very quickly. And so with that, I, again, support this project, recommend the project, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak at this time? Not seeing anyone. Jason, is there anyone online? Any emails? Do the property owner want to speak at all? Okay. Not seeing anyone rushing up, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Okay. Members of the commission, questions, comments, discussion?
I will be supporting this. I think that this is a good project. You have dotted all of your i's, you've crossed all of your t's, you've presented well-documented paperwork for us. And I think that anytime, we have a lot of old buildings downtown, and I know that Oprah will definitely help you do those renovations. I have been a property manager in a building that received an Oprah, and it was it was saving for us while we were trying to get everything done and get it full with renters. So this is the best of both worlds because we are still going to be capturing taxes. We're just not going to be capturing at the rate when you get it completed until twelve years out, and I think that it's a win for everyone.
Commissioner Al Sager?
I agree with Commissioner Perschbacher. I think it's a good project.
Dead out.
Vice Mayor?
Dead out. All right, yeah, this is a good project. I actually like this, and I have been worried about structures in the downtown area that seem abandoned, you know, all blighted, and so this is one way of rejuvenating the downtown area, rehabilitating the building. I'm only asking because I'm curious, why twelve years?
Standard.
Standard.
That's a standard amount of time for an Oprah.
So hypothetically, I understand it's standard, but hypothetically, okay, we'll discuss that amongst ourselves.
Well, I was gonna say it's because usually if you give twelve years, that gives the property owner the ability to recoup some of that before they're paying out, because once it goes up in value, the taxes do go up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so follow up. So I'm going to assume that if we say yes to this, you're not going to turn around and sell the building, you know, two or three years after, you know, we've said yes to this.
I guess that would be a question for staff on like, what is?
What, yeah, 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 what's, yeah, they, you know, the boundaries. So we'll talk about that.
Could you repeat the question? My apologies.
I am just simply saying that I am assuming that once we say, you know, if we were to say yes, go ahead with this, that the, you know, and once it's done, the property owner is not going to turn around, you know, because it seems to me that the promise is that we're gonna do this, maintain it so that, you know, we will sustain our downtown area, and we're doing this in good faith and trust, right? So so property owner is not going to go turn around and sell the building as such, you know?
If I may, Vice Mayor, I remember, I know the concern you're talking about. I remember having that conversation back, especially when we were doing more grant funding, like so providing additional funding. That was the concern there earlier. I think we were handling topics like that earlier in the year. In this case, this is the abatement of taxes, so we're not providing additional funding, and the improvements would still be there, is my understanding. Whether or not the building is sold, so the improvements and investment are still there. Does the tax abatement carry with the building, or does it carry with the owner?
No, so it is with the building, but per the city's Oprah policy, there are conditions for rescission of the exemption and sale or closure of the building would be one of those. So it would be up to the city commission in the event of a sale or closure if they wanted to remove the tax.
Tax abatement. That's why I'm asking this question upfront. Okay, when we come to that bridge or that river, we'll figure out how to cross the bridge, right? We'll discuss that later.
It looks like a great project. It falls well within the guidelines and the boundaries of the Oprah program. I do have a question about the owner suite in the back of the building. According to the blueprints that were given, there's a lot of talk about apartments being provided with renovations and some housing for downtown, which is obviously needed. Can I get some clarification on the owner suite? Are we? Yeah, if you would, please.
Hi, I'm Sarah Beauchamp Hicks. I'm one of the owners with my husband Troy Hicks, who is a professor at Central, and if he would hear, he would say, we're not going anywhere for a long time.
Okay.
So but the owner's suite in the back, we got approval with a special use permit back last fall, I believe it was. We have a down, it's an upstairs-downstairs townhouse-like structure that is will be separated by firewalls from the commercial part in the front, and it is more than fifty yards from the fifty feet or yards, I don't know what it is, from the front of the you know, entryway. So it falls under all of the restrictions and code and everything that we have, that the city has outlined.
Okay.
We will have a two-bedroom and a one-bedroom apartment, but those are upstairs too, in two different buildings, so.
Thank you.
I guess what I was kind of, my point I was trying to make is, are we giving an abatement for renovating your apartment downtown?
Well, while we are the owners of the building, we have a property company that is, that owns the buildings, and then we're be renting from that property company. So as our, you know, we have our own LLC that we will rent from. So in some ways, yes, I guess you are, but we are also providing, we're also paying quite a bit of taxes already. And then, you know, eventually, we're also putting in, it was interesting when you were first talking about like, the abatement is wonderful, don't get me wrong, it makes all the difference in this whole project, but we're also investing close to two million dollars in the project, so you know, I think that we're showing good faith in that arena as well.
It is a very large undertaking. I saw all the bids. It well qualifies for the twelve years according to the size of the renovation. I just wanted some clarification as far as that little snippet of it, so thank you very much for that.
Commissioner Rollins, any comments, questions? Let's see. Yeah, so one of my, both of my first two questions were answered. The why twelve years seems like an odd amount versus like ten years, but again, it allows for the recoup of income for the investment that's made, which was my second question, the two million investment that's been already made into it, which is really grateful to see those kinds of dollars coming into our downtown area. The only other question I have, and this is a bit more directed to staff, for other people who own buildings in the downtown area, what kind of qualifications or standards are there for an Oprah tax abatement of this kind?
And so property has to be within an Oprah district, an established Oprah district, and as it happens, both the central business district as well as the Mission Picker DDA are established open districts. So virtually, all of our commercial districts are already established within there. And per the city's policy, for those that would meet it, we do have the policy online. It is located, if you go onto the website, on the downtown development or the downtown page, you can find the Oprah district information on there. But essentially, it would have to be a property which is deemed as obsolete by the city. We do have the city assessor who would come in and make that determination to, you know, state, and you'll see within the packet, the letter from the assessor is in there stating that this is indeed an obsolete property. There's a process for going through the application, applying, and everything like that. Folks cannot be back on taxes, those kind of things. You've got to be up to date on all your taxes, fees, and all of that kind of stuff. But other details, again, are within the city's Oprah policy, which you can find on the city's website.
Perfect. Thank you, Manager Dissence. If there's no other discussion or questions at this time, is there a motion from the members of the commission?
Do we need to follow a certain wording?
Let me pull that wording up.
Just number thirteen on the agenda.
Yeah, I would imagine it's number thirteen.
You said a public hearing.
Ah, let's see.
I move that we set a public hearing to consider. This is never mind, sorry.
Approve the Oprah.
We approve the Oprah.
Tax abatement.
I move that we approve the Oprah tax abatement for properties at one fifteen and one seventeen South University.
How's that in that?
Okay. Loudest and everything, so motion by Commissioner Bush, and again, loudest I heard Commissioner Al Sager jumping in for the second there. Let's see, so, let's see. So it would be approving the Oprah tax abatements for one fifteen and one seventeen South University as presented. See, all those in favor of approving, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. Okay.
I just want to make sure that if we can state the intent was, there's a resolution that was in your packet with all of the details on there, and the request was for twelve years.
Let's see, gotcha, so let's go ahead and. So, that's a great question.
Friendly amendment to add twelve years to the proposal.
Yeah. Friendly amendment has been made. There's the second there, so. So Commissioner Al Sager is putting forward a motion to amend to the previous motion to include a twelve-year term. It was seconded by Commissioner Skolitski. See, all those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. Okay. That brings us into new business. Item number fourteen. We will have a presentation on the twenty fifty master plan updates by Jason Ball with Progressive Companies. Manager Dissence, if you want any introductions?
Yeah, city staff has worked with Progressive Companies on updating the city's master plan. Jason Ball is here from Progressive Companies to highlight the major changes being proposed in the master plan. Under the consent agenda, the city commission had been asked to set a public hearing to consider feedback before adoption. So following a public hearing that will be on September twenty-second, the city commission would then be asked to consider the proposed adaption of the master plan updates. But until then, Mr. Ball will be taking us through those proposed updates.
Thank you, Manager Dissence. Good evening, city commissioners. We were here with you a couple of months back going through more detail on the Mission Street Improvement Plan process overall, as well as how that translated to an update to the city's master plan. My intent this evening is just briefly to provide a refresher on that overall master planning process, step through the comments that the city received during the public comment period. Again, there's a state mandated sixty-three-day public comment period, so to walk through those comments, identify a couple of changes that were identified by staff as being appropriate based on those comments, and then answer any questions you all have about the draft plan or any of the process pending the public hearing at your next meeting. As you all may recall, the Mission Street Improvement Plan process has been going on now for about eighteen months. We started in April of twenty twenty-four, engaging a series of stakeholders on a steering committee we met here in this room after walking the corridor and identifying a series of issues that all sort of developed into our State of the Corridor presentation that we gave here. that all sort of developed into our State of the Corridor presentation that we gave here about a year ago, actually, a year and some change, as well as to the Downtown Development Authority and Planning Commission. That evolved into an open house, additional couple of community surveys. Ultimately, that plan for addressing Mission Street was approved by the Steering Committee at the end of last year. That was approved by the DD, Mission Picker DDA in January, and then the master plan update process started. So we had a plan document that addressed the corridor itself. And then the second step step was to incorporate that plan into the city's master plan by tweaking some goals and objectives and then changing some content. This has been our process on the master plan update. We are at the end, step number 10, where you all have the opportunity to take action at the public hearing at the next meeting you all hold. So the Planning Commission voted to adopt the plan by resolution at their previous meeting. And I'm here this evening because the Planning Director, Manuela Podeco, is out of town, so I'm pinch hitting for her tonight. Just as a reminder, the sort of impetus for the Mission Street Improvement Plan was that there's been a lot of work on Mission Street over the years, dating back to 2008. The Michigan Department of Transportation proposed a really significant change to Mission Street that would have widened the road substantially, required the purchase of a different additional right of way or space from property owners. That approach ultimately was not approved by this body. That resulted in additional plans in 2009 for managing access to try to smooth traffic. There was a non-motorized plan then in 2012 that incorporated sections of Union Township. And then ultimately, the city's master plan update and zoning code update in 2012 made significant recommendations and changes to the way Mission Street was handled in terms of policy. This is a graphic from the current city zoning code that illustrates the regulations around Mission Street that exist now. This road isn't possible on the vast majority of Mission Street. There's too much space from the sidewalk to sidewalk that are that is required. That literally doesn't fit almost anywhere on Mission Street. And so as we engaged on this update process, the number one priority communicated by city staff really clearly was that anything we did had to be feasible. It had to work in the real, in the real world. And we had to be sure that it was responding to what we heard from the community. So when we kicked off the project in April of 24, we had a community survey that got outstanding feedback. Thanks so much to a lot of work that city staff did to share that survey. Generally, what we heard from folks was lots of everybody, almost everybody that usually uses Mission Street today uses a car. But a lot more people, if they had the option, would walk or bike, but don't because they feel unsafe or it's dangerous. In that survey, we asked people to describe Mission Street with one word. These were the words we got about today, right? It's busy, it's chaotic, it's congested, it can be frustrating. Generally, what we heard through that process consistently was that if people could avoid Mission Street, they did. We heard then was their vision for the Mission Street was safety. Safety was the word that came out, sort of far and away above everything else, as well as things like it being more friendly, more efficient, more accessible, walkable, easily organized, et cetera. So we did that walking audit. As I mentioned, that walking audit all included included a variety of stakeholders on our steering committee. That's an image of our meeting there at the bottom of the slide. That included business owners, representatives from our planning commission, city staff, our disability advocate, the mid Michigan Disability Group, the transportation agency here let us use a bus and got us around the corridor. So when we started that process, one of the things that came up repeatedly was a perspective that Mission Street was seeing declining traffic and declining opportunities because of a decrease in population in Mount Pleasant, primarily driven by declining enrollment at CMU. So I'll say that when we started, it was sort of like ho hum. The attitude was not, it was sort of like this thing was going poorly at CMU. And as a consequence, things were going poorly on Mission Street. The reality for Mission Street is that Michigan, Mission Street's been losing traffic for a really long time, entirely separate from changes in population at MSU for all of those reasons on the survey, right? Mission Streets had the same five lane cross section, same dynamic for a long time. So as long as people have been able to avoid mission, they have, and that's really driving a bunch of results that are no good for anybody. Business owners, pedestrians, everyone needs to be able to access Mission Street safely. Less traffic, fewer people walking isn't a good thing. That's because Mission Street's unsafe. So there were almost 1,000 crashes on Mission Street between 2019 and 2023. Eleven of those were severe. Thirteen of those involved vulnerable road users or people that are walking or riding a bike. And then there was one fatality. So through all of that, as you all will recall, when we presented the plan last time, we identified a series of potential improvements for Mission Street and prioritize those based on feedback from the community as well as the Mission Picker DDA and business owners. This is just a snapshot or a summary of some of those improvements. They include adding things like pedestrian refuge islands, opportunities to make left turns more safe so that cars have to, can't cut the corner, they have to go and make a 90 degree turn. Adding additional crossings, doing things like adding a shared use path on a portion of Mission Street. That's in other words, a really a wider sidewalk that allows people to walk and bike in the portion of Mission Street where we have room. Only about half the corridor, there's enough space in the right of way to actually make that work. So all those recommendations were pulled together in that plan. And then that plan was incorporated into the city's master plan as an update to the master plan. At the same time, there were some tweaks that needed to be made to the plan because the plan was five years old. And so we also made those sort of small changes at the same time. I'll just really briefly run through all of those. So to just to refresh your memory, as you all may remember, the master plan is broken into books. The first book is just a summary. So we updated that summary book to include all of the information that works in the rest of the plan. And Book One, which is all about land use and identifying the future vision for land use in the in the entire city. But in particularly in this case, we edited pieces related to the corridor. We provided more flexibility. We also separated, created a separate designation for Mission Street from downtown. And the plan that exists today, prior to you all taking final action, Mission Street has the same, Southern Mission Street has the same designation as downtown Mount Pleasant. Those are two really different places, right? And so it was clear in our work that we needed to treat Mission Street separately from downtown and plan for it in a different way. Book Two, then we essentially took information out of there that was previously included around Mission Street and replaced it with the content from the improvement plan that we had developed. We also emphasized the access management section. Access management means very simply limiting the number of driveways that are on a roadway. So if you have fewer driveways to cross on a sidewalk, there are fewer left turns being made. Areas are much safer for pedestrians and everyone and everyone using it. And so we just wanted to prioritize that piece. In Book Three, we updated some simple maps. We incorporated information from our Mission and Motion Report, which was the summary report from the Mission Street Improvement Plan. We also updated the Town Center Vision Plan because Town Center has changed since 2020 to reflect those changes. And we also made some changes to the Economic Development Plan section to reflect the demographic updates we made to the plan. So we, as part of the plan update, updated all of the demographic information in the plan because in five years that had changed fairly significantly. Book Four, we updated to provide a new five year Parks and Recreation Plan. So in order to be eligible for grants from the state of Michigan to support Parks and Recreation investments, the city is required to update this plan every five years. For Mount Pleasant, that plan is a plan within a plan. It exists within the master plan. And so Phil and his team went through and updated that section of the plan as well at the same time. And then lastly, in Book Five, which includes all of the goals and objectives, we updated those to reflect projects that have been completed since the previous plan is adopted in 2020. Also added a couple of goals and objectives to reflect the Mission Street Improvement Plan and then updated the demographics section to include things like population change that you all saw has sort of significantly taken a different trend in Mount Pleasant than it had in up to 2020. In terms of that overall plan update and that process, are there any questions from any of you on the city commission regarding that or clarifying points that I can provide?
Question?
Hearing none.
Oh, actually, I had a question. Book One, are you comfortable getting into like this, like some of the specifics or anything?
Yeah, absolutely.
Also, much more of your presentation to come. I don't want to stop you halfway and everything.
Stop me halfway, that's all.
Okay, gotcha. For the Book One, can you clarify the restrictions with versus design considerations for me?
Yeah. So and I'm just going to really quickly switch back to the presentation we went over in April that actually includes some more.
Language on that.
Well, it's got pictures are worth 1,000 words, right? So fundamentally, the the current approach in the guidance we provided here is that today there's a high level of restriction in terms of the design that's allowed in Mission Street, right? Because it's related to design downtown. And so the intent here, what we did was we created what we called the mixed use regional corridor. So that applies to Southern Mission Street, again emphasizing access management. We're allowing buildings to be set back further. We're encouraging buildings to be set back further from the road. These changes all have to be pulled into the zoning code once the plan's adopted. Today, most buildings are required to be set either at the back of the sidewalk or close to it. On Mission Street, that creates a lot of just feasibility challenges for new development. And so allowing more flexibility and thinking about requiring parking rather than being all the way behind the buildings, which is required today, to just be behind the front face of buildings. So rather than going sort of all the way to envisioning Mission Street becoming like a new downtown, sort of splitting the difference and allowing for some better design, but not requiring the kind of design standards that exist today in your code that are really difficult for current property owners or developers to comply with.
And was that change focused on Mission Street then, like as far as that terminology change? Or is that like citywide more?
Mission Street only. So we created a new, what we call the new mixed use regional corridor, future land use designation that only applies to the southern section of Mission Street.
Okay.
So no changes to the existing standards for downtown.
Any other questions? That was my one and only there. Thank you.
Absolutely. Just gonna flip back to the other one here. So as part of the state required process for adopting a update to the city's master plan, we opened a comment period, we published the plan, sent out notice of the plan being published and requested comments. During that time, we received several comments that I think, I believe are all included in your packet. Based on those comments, there are a couple of changes that staff is recommending. One of those is to indicate the plan for the West Broadway Street extension in the master plan. That is a planned street extension that has actually been within on sort of the city's long range planning books for a long time. It was not included in the 2020 plan update, but we felt like it was appropriate to include here. In some ways, it should have been included in the 2020 plan update. The other change was to clarify language around identifying opportunities to enhance the interchange on 127, the southern portion of 127, and to clarify that it's no longer related to Broomfield Road. So just to start with Broomfield Road, this is the current page in the plan. This is our proposed page. We're proposing adding a sentence and removing the word Broomfield. Broomfield shouldn't have been there. That was an oversight. And so the new language we're proposing is that for the proposed interchange, so in essence, as you all know today, if you're coming to Mount Pleasant, you can only get onto the southern portion of Mission Street one way. Coming from the south, you can't get there from the north. You also can't go north from there. And so our proposal was if M dot ever reconsiders those interchanges, to make that interchange two directional. So you can go both north and south. So we added language to note that the proposed interchange location is the city's preferred alternative, but we're in fire extensive analysis by M dot along with detailed design work. This is in response to a comment from Union Township asking that that interchange location include a connection to the east. So the other side of the city. The city felt like that really wasn't something we could comment on that's well outside of the city borders and isn't necessarily relevant to the city. However, M dot if and when that day comes is able to provide for that. Bi-directional interchange is sort of fine with the city's perspective. But we didn't feel like making the case that that interchange should now go to the opposite side of 127 where it is today. Back to the question or back to the other item on extending Broadway. This is the future transportation plan as it currently exists in the plan. Our recommended change is to show a West Broadway Street extension that continues and connects to Lincoln Street, which is our proposed rerouting of M21. As part of this, that extension, and then updating another map just as part of the plan that includes the reroute of M21. And then providing clarity that if that extension were ever to incur, it should be part of development that happens on that property, but not done preemptively. So there's no reason to extend that road if there's not development that occurs there to the west. But that if that development does occur, it may be appropriate at that time to extend Broad Broadway as a, as part of that overall development project. So those are the two recommended changes to the plan that staff has identified. Overall, in terms of comments received, these are the four kind of summary comments received from Union Township. So we've fully addressed one, which is the Broadway Street Extension, partially addressed the requests regarding the US 127 interchange. The township also requested the city to consider moving the proposed roundabout at Bluegrass and Mission South to the the current intersection of Old Mission Street and provide a connection there to the sort of commercial development to the east. There were several reasons why it was deemed not appropriate to include that change. The biggest reason is that if it was moved, that roundabout would no longer meet necessary criteria for funding from the Michigan Department of Transportation. So keeping it where it is as designed is the best way to have it be eligible for funding if and when that time occurs.
What's the difference in funding there? Like why, like why is the state prefer one option over the other?
Yeah, so I'm not a traffic engineer. I'll clarify that. But my understanding is that funding is based on what M dot calls warrants, which in other words, there's a certain number of crashes, that there's a certain incidence of issues at an intersection that warrant investment in a change. So the intersection at Old Mission Street doesn't have that much traffic. So it would never meet the warrant for installation of that roundabout, whereas the Bluegrass intersection has all of that traffic today and would meet those warrants.
Thank you.
Yep. The other comment that was not addressed from Union Township was around rerouting M20. The concept of rerouting M20 has been in plans in Mount Pleasant for a long time to move that state route out of neighborhoods on High Street and further outside of town. So staff and others felt like it wasn't appropriate to make that change and continue with the proposed rerouting of M20 that's been maintained in city plans for some time now. There are a couple of resident comments that Ms. Powadeiko responded to in detail. I believe her responses are included in your packet. There was no necessary changes that were identified in those resident responses or those resident questions. And overall, many of those comments received were positive in nature. So we felt really good about those and the opportunity to address those. Lastly, there was one comment that was received regarding the proposed possible extension of Oak Street, just outside this building here. That extension is identified in the revised downtown center plan or vision plan, excuse me. And at this time, we're not identifying any need for a change because this is really just an overall vision, a concept for consideration at the city. The concept there was, there's been lots of needs for for better access to Island Park. There's one way in and one way out today. And so considering the extension of Oak Street to have an actual vehicular bridge rather than a pedestrian bridge was something that was identified in this vision plan. This is not included in any of the city's current capital improvement programs. This is not a project that's been funded. This was something that was identified in the plan just as consideration as we're looking at planning in the future. So there was some concern about that extension from nearby business owners. At this time, we don't feel like it's appropriate to change it because this is really just about sort of a concept that gives the city an opportunity to dive deeper in the future. This is not something that's been programmed or finalized at this time. That's it. Those are the comments we perceived and responses to them. I'm happy to answer any questions. There's also other city staff here that can answer questions as well.
Bye, Samira. Okay.
Just a logistical question. So, I mean, first of all, thank you for updating us, you know, and refreshing our memory. So as you're looking at this. You know, I'm refreshing our memory. So as you're looking at this and thinking of what to do, what might be your challenge? What is going to be a threat for you to complete this or to work, get this done?
The plan itself?
Uh, the plan and the project.
You mean the, the project, the Mission Street project overall?
Yeah.
Yeah, so actually.
Implement your plan. At least get your plan done means implementing it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So uh I'll say very clearly, it's not my plan. It's everybody's plan if we move forward with this, right? So it's important that um there's sort of common shared ownership in that. Um, I'd say we're making really good progress already. So um the city's working with the Mission Picker DDA and M dot to pursue grant funding to do the shared use pathway. That was envisioned in the plan already. Um, we have a meeting with the DDA on Thursday to look, to look at preliminary, preliminary design to apply for what's called a transportation alternatives program, brand. Um, at the same time, M dot is planning to resurface the road. It just do very simple kind of resurfacing, not making any significant changes. Over the next two summers, twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven. City staff has been working with them at the same time to identify if there are small improvements we can make when that's happening. So we've talked about the installation of potential pedestrian crossing islands at a few locations as part of that. Um, addressing the current pedestrian crossing island that doesn't work so well at Appian Way there by Wendy's. Um, also looking at improvements to key intersections. We've had a lot of conversations about the intersection at Broomfield. And whether or not, for example, the right-hand turn lane there can be shortened or removed, so it's a shorter crossing. That's our most dangerous intersection by far. Um, a lot of the changes there that can happen are things that are relatively inexpensive and can be part of that project. So uh I think to answer your question directly, um it's not implementation of this plan and addressing the issues in, on Mission Street. Isn't going to be something that happens all at once. So I think the biggest challenge is going to be sort of keeping the, our eye on the prize. And continuing to meet and move forward and identify those sort of small opportunities for implementing pieces. Because it's unlikely that there will be a large sum of funds that can do the whole thing at once.
I have a follow up. I like that you're looking at grants that you're collaborating with both state and local, you know, entities. Um, what type of buy-in do you have with businesses located along that area? Because this is going to have, you know, tremendous impact on them. Good, I don't know. But, you know, hopefully good. That's what we're hoping, right? But what are you hearing from them? What kind of buy-in are you getting from them?
So we had a lot of conversations with businesses. So on our steering committee, the largest proportion of uh stakeholder group represented were businesses, right? So they had included members of the Mission Picker DDA as well as like the owner at, at Rick's Grocery Store. Um, and so we had a lot of conversations with them as we went through the process, just to be sure that they were comfortable with it. And the plan we went so far is to figure out what's the timing for a truck delivery to Gordon's Food Service pre-meeting or post-meeting if we installed it. The impact is negligible at best. Um, it may actually be positive overall. So um, you know, we're presenting again back to the DDA, which is primarily composed of business and property owners along Mission Street. For their approval of matched funding to, to approve the grant. So throughout, we've made a commitment to those business owners to keep them informed and involved. And so uh and that's been a, a real conversation with us and the Michigan Department of Transportation throughout as well. So when we do decide that we can install some of those pedestrian islands. We'll be very sure to have a conversation with those business owners about where those islands are being installed. To be sure they don't create issues with being able to access the business.
Okay. Final question, and then I won't ask you again.
Feel free. That's what we're here for.
Okay. So I realize that CMU is further away, you know, from, you know, uh Mission. But actually this close, or at least it will be impacted. Because a lot of Central Michigan University students live on the, on the east side of, you know, Mission, right? And they're constantly crossing the street. I watch them, you know, try to cross at a point where that gas station is not the one on. Preston and Mission, but the other one. And near accidents, near accidents, my students complain. They want Mission gone. Are you having conversations with students? What kinds of conversations are you having with students? Or maybe even with CMU, you know, you know, that community, because it is going to be affected by whatever happens here.
Yeah, so uh thank you. I left a key person out of our steering committee when I described it earlier. So the, the Central Michigan uh head of facilities was a part of our steering committee. So they were involved in that process throughout. When we held um pop-up events to get feedback on the initial uh draft plan, we were in two places. The Central Michigan Student Union and the Farmers Market here, and then this room, so three places. Um, when we did the survey, that survey was shared through Central Michigan student bodies. And we had, I think, I want to say about twenty percent of our respondents identified as CMU students in one way or another.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Other questions from members of the commission? Seeing any? Okay, thank you, Jason. I appreciate the presentation. Let's see. Manager of Dissence, could you remind me, was there um a requested action alongside this? Did we need to set a public hearing? Since it's not technically required, we could just do so.
Correct. So since we already set the public hearing for the twenty second, no required action this evening. The city commission will be asked to receive feedback at that public hearing on the twenty second. And then following that uh public hearing, we will be asking the city commission to uh approve the amended, the amendments to the master plan as presented.
Okay. Thank you, Manager of Dissence. And just a comment on that, again, um the public hearing wasn't, uh was determined not to be. Required part of the process was to make that update um in conversation. Um, that came about recently. I want to say in the last week, two weeks, we came to that understanding. Um, Vice Mayor Eka and I, as we were discussing with Manager of Dissence, felt it was, again, it was the intention, original intention to have that public hearing. Um, and again, it's the master plan. It's one of the most significant documents we have. So that was the thought process in maintaining that. Even though it's not a requirement for it. Um, in any case, that brings us to item number fifteen. Manager of Dissence, if you would.
Item number fifteen, the city commission is asked to consider setting a joint work session for November twenty four, twenty twenty five. Regular meeting with the planning commission and property owners to discuss alternatives to the proposed zoning map amendments Z twenty four zero one. For the five properties located southwest of Crawford and Broomfield. Staff is suggesting setting up such a joint work session between the planning commission and the city commission and property owners. At that November twenty fourth meeting. The previously proposed rezoning for the five parcels are, again, are located on Crawford and Broomfield. And are subject of a planned residential development, a PRD. Uh, the request would be to consider hardline zoning designations that aim to allow residential and commercial developments. As well as a private school development. The work session would include a presentation from the city's planning and community development director. Facilitation and discussion led by a third party. This has been proven very useful in the past when we're working with two large boards such as this. Working to identify both commission goals for the properties. That would be both the city commission's goals as well as the planning commission's goals. Discuss alternatives for zoning trade-offs of each of those possibilities. And then to develop a plan on what future zoning the property should be and how to achieve it.
Members of the commission, any questions on this topic, discussion to be had?
I.
Vice Mayor?
Looking at this, I, you know, I, I am curious. So. I'm assuming that this meeting will, you know, as you said, it's going to be a joint meeting between. The city commissioner, uh city commission and the planning commission. After that, will the planning commission then bring forward? Whatever plan or whatever decision the planning commission has made about this particular property. To the city commission.
No, it would be the city commission working with the planning commission on a plan for that property together.
And am I to understand that after that, that would be. The final plan or the definitive plan for this particular property?
Uh, at least for the time being, certainly the city commission has the ability to amend plans in the future. Uh, I would though guess because this is a, a fairly uh complex property. Again, the uh the peer, yeah, the, the um residential, the planned residential development that is currently on the property is essentially a binding contract. And that was one of the complicating factors for this that is so restrictive. That only that type of development can be done on that property. And certainly we wanted to open it up to the concept for other potential developments on the property. Um, so it's going to be very likely that we're going to have to have a conversation on what the future vision is for that property, the zoning designation. But I have a feeling too that the property owner is going to want some sort of assurances in that conversation to know that that will be the plan. So I, to short answer your question, yes, I believe so.
Okay, I'm trying to. I am trying to wrangle this. Um, because as you said, it's a very complicated. Property which. Or about which we have had complicated conversations. And about which we may potentially have to have complicated conversations. And I'm worried about just having this one be it. And all conversation with the planning commission. It feels to me like uh the one ring that binds them all. Okay, so and that's why I'm asking that question. We have a meeting with the planning commission. Then what? Does the planning commission then, you know, so how do we, you know, look at this? Is. Okay.
Can I, I, I want to borrow on, on your, your parallel if I can. Because I'm a big Lord of the Rings fan. We are Gollum right now. We've been wearing the ring for a very long time. Nothing's happened with the property. And we are currently held to a, a PRD that is binding. And so the one ring currently does bind us all. The idea is to have some sort of a conversation to look at other alternatives for the future of the property. And I, that's where I think the Lord of the Rings analogy ends at that point, because I can't think of anything more clever to say.
Yeah. You know, i-if I may, uh that, that was a surprisingly very like, actually very cohesive analogy. With a very niche part of um like fantasy lore there. Um, if, if I can summarize this and then I want to go to Commissioner Alstaker. Um, yeah, so my understanding, again, from the conversation back and forth, again. You know, the only plan that, like, actual plan discussed and everything that has previously been out there was the future land use plan. Um, the previous proposal that came forward was different from that. And I think that was a big part of the discussion that came forward. Um, but again, the planning commission voted one way on the proposal. City commission voted a different way, so we can bring the bodies together to discuss. You know, like what are our desires for the property? It would allow greater forward movement and developments. Now, uh Vice Mayor, I would argue that if, if we're not satisfied after one work session. Additional work sessions could be warranted potentially, but um it's, it's seeking the, hopefully we can be productive. But again, like I suppose, in all things, if compromise can't be reached the first time, then we have to try, try again. Um, but I'd like to move to Commissioner Alstaker and everything also.
Well, knowing that we um voted this down before, are we going to get a changed proposal?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Yeah, so as I understand it right now, when we're going to be going, if we are going to go into this work session, we're not going to have the actual. Are we going to have a proposal before us? Or are we discussing?
Yeah. You know, and I do want to call Manuela, um our, our planner and community development director, Manuela Povidoko, I know is on. Uh, Zoom right now. So actually, I'm wondering if maybe I can pull her into this conversation. She's been more involved with the proposed developer, and so she knows uh more about where they're at in their process than I do.
All right, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fantastic. All right. So yeah, I'm hoping that we can bring alternatives to y'all, so we don't start with a blank page. Um, so we can provide uh just context to everybody before we start into the discussion. And we can also bring uh some ideas forward in terms of options. And our hope is to try to find consensus. But um to also answer to the question before, we can always have uh other discussions and work sessions if needed. But I can present some, some ideas. You know, there is the future land use map. Um, we do have the private school proposal and potentially an alternative. Um, that I would like to bring the school board as well for questions, in case the commissions have questions to them as well.
I do have a question regarding the packet that was sent to us this week. Uh, is the new proposal for the future work session. Uh, the one that is including considerations for a potential golf course?
Um, so the golf course that you probably saw in the packet is related to the previous uh PRD agreement. We don't have currently a zoning designation for golf courses. But if the intention is to discuss potential open spaces in the land. That is certainly uh up for discussion and negotiations with the property owners.
Uh, maybe I was mistaken by uh what I was looking at exactly, but it looked like according to the new zoning designation. Uh, it was considering the requirements um and accommodations for the development dur-in the proposal. So if I put two and two together, it makes me think that that is the intention of the property from the developers. If you're going to be making sure that you're following the development requirements for your drainage, for your water lines. For this and that and the other thing, that your intention is to install a golf course.
I see. In the past, there was um a proposal that included a golf course. But there's none at this, at right now, basically.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions from members of the commission? Okay, um, let's see. Yeah, so again, the proposed work session would include um city commission, the planning commission. It sounds like uh, is it the single owner or more, or there are several owners, is my understanding?
There are three entities. So Central Michigan University and then Ed Peters and McGurk's. So three owners owning the five uh parcels.
Vice Mayor?
Since you have, or the planning commission has added the private school or. Possible conversation about the private school in this particular. Scheduling. I would like to find out what conversation has been had with the public school. Because there is a public school less than one mile away, just down the street. And I do think that it is important for us to have a serious conversation with the public school. You indicated that you might invite them or the school board. I hope you do. Because I think that they should have a say, um, you know, good or bad, the, you know. Uh, uh, this has tremendous impact for public schools for us in the community.
Yeah, that is a good question to the city commission in terms who to bring at the table. Um, originally, uh in the memo, I was suggesting the planning commission, city commission. And uh the property owners because of the PRD dissolution that also has to happen. Before we reach the rezoning steps. Um, but if the city commission would like to include others in that um in the table. Or maybe available for questions. Uh, I don't think we've done that in the past, but that doesn't mean we can do it now in the future. So I would love to have some uh recommendations on that too.
So why are we not taking the private school off the table and just simply address the dissolution and the other pieces? The private school in later on, right? It's not.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the proposal is to have the commissions and the property owners.
Okay.
Okay. My recommendation is that we talk about the, you know, uh what to do with the PRD. Uh, I, you know, right now, I think we're dealing with too many complicated pieces, at least for me. To, you know, uh and maybe set aside the private school conversation and bring that back later on. After we've addressed the issue of the dissolution.
Other comments?
My thought is that we're dealing with multiple things, including the private school, which is not part of this dissolution at the same time. Or am I reading this incorrectly? Am I misunderstanding things?
No, you're good. So my understanding, um having, uh again, there was a divided commission that um in the vote to um. vote down the um the proposal on rezoning, um, when this came before us in November of last year. Um, so it's contentious even within the commission. There's different thoughts on how to proceed with that. Um, my understanding, at least as far as how I voted, what I remember hearing at the time was, and I think this is referenced in the packet as well, as far as like staff's takeaways, was there was the desire to um dissolve the PRD. Um, because it was seen as no no longer useful for um effective zoning, effective development. So we could move to hard, uh, it was the desire to move to hardline zoning, um, which is what most of the rest of the city is in. I believe, um, and Director Powadeiko, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe this is the last PRD within the city?
Is, yes.
Gotcha. So this is the last section of the of property within um the city that is zoned in this nature and has this kind of agreement upon it. Um, so again, the takeaway previously, and others can voice if they have different takeaways. Um, but the previous um takeaway was that we wanted to move away from that. We were in favor of dissolving the PRD. But what would the end result look like? What portions would be zoned in what fashion? For myself, I looked at it previously of like trying the school, very contentious topic. I looked just at what was the zoning. It could be a park, it could be school, it could be anything. What was the zoning um requirements? And I relied on the future land use plan. That's how I came to it. But as has been often remarked, we can change plans if needed, um, so we can have those conversations. So it's a discussion of what exactly would we like to see happen there? Um, is there common gra- or is there a common ground between especially the business or because we need the signatures of the property owners in order to dissolve dissolve the PRD? Ultimately, we can't dissolve the PRD without their signatures on it as well. Um, that's part of the restrictive nature of it all. Um, but in any case, um, I would be comfortable, I think, moving forward with the conversation um with the three parties. I I would, I would like to get input from the schools, but I think as you were talking about, it distracts from the main argument, which is zoning. Um, so if we're focused solely on the zoning aspect, I think that simplifies the discussion to those three groups. And we're already hiring a mediator with the size of the group that we'll have. So I think bringing in another board on top of it could drag us even further along or back, but.
I I agree with you. I mean, I'm going to agree with you if the conversation or if the private school is not included. But if you include the private school, then the public school is has interest in this, and that's why my comment came from.
I I.
That's why I'm asking the questions that I'm asking. I want equity. I want representation, you know? So that's why I'm asking.
Commissioner Bush?
I'm concerned just with the presence of the property owners, knowing that they have motivated buyers who are the private school. That's gonna be part of the conversation, whether we like it or not. I I think um it might be valu- valuable to know what. Um, I I I mean, that's why we're probably gonna have more than one meeting, though.
Yeah.
So uh, maybe from what is discussed at that meeting, we'd we'd have more information to prop- you know, show to the private or show to the public school and then involve them in another stage if that's the direction the conversation goes.
Okay, okay. Other members of the commission, comments, questions, or concerns, or anything, what what are you taking into the conversation at this point?
Um, given everything uh that we've gone through over the last couple of meetings regarding housing inside of Mount Pleasant, our commitment to housing within the master plan and this PRD that we have before us, what is the big push to rezone? And why was the the commission, uh, why did we vote it down prior to?
Yeah, um, if I may uh speak on that, um, the discussion, I believe, in bringing forward the proposal um with the rezoning and so I don't know if staff would be able to be pull up the future land use map real quick on the screen or anything, um.
No.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna shake it. Uh, yeah, no, yeah, not worried about that. Um, uh, sections of the uh, the property is owned primarily or in the future land use plan. I believe it's residential, um, of varying levels, um, with some, um.
Some duplexes, some.
Yeah, and then some in the corner or some uh commercial space on it.
I believe there was even some uh single family dwellings in there as well.
I believe so, yeah. So again, a mixture, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, my understanding, um, and I'll allow Director Powadeiko to correct me on this about my understanding of it and everything or provide additional detail on it. But my understanding behind and motivation behind the rezoning is by, um, there was a potential developer that wanted to uh come in, um, that wanted to put in a school, private religious school into that area. Um, and to support that, the rezoning of a portion of the property was suggested. Um, with the idea being placing that development there would attract additional housing or developments, additional interest in the area. Um, let's see, um, and again, it would help spur additional development. Director Powadeiko, if you wanted to give any feedback or input on that um process there?
Yes, I guess first I wanted to confirm if I was able to share my screen to have the future menu map.
Yes.
Could you zoom in a bit, though?
Yes, let me see. I think I have just half of my screen. Just give me one second. Wait.
That's better, thank you.
Okay, all right. So this is the future land use map for the properties across from Broomfield. So we have one parcel as mixed use low, so commercial, residential, or a mix of the two could happen if rezoned. And then we have attached residential on these two properties. So uh basically, single family duplexes, townhomes, small apartments would be able to be built if uh rezoned according to the land use map. And then we have um residential on this half of the the other two parcels in which residential, single family, or duplexes pursuant to a special use permit would be able to be built. Um, so this is how the future land use map was set up. And before I get into the school proposal, it's uh important to mention when rezonings are proposed. So uh every city planner should be looking at the future land use map and proposing rezonings according to that as we move towards into the future. So this is a planning tool that is approved by uh the community and indicates what kinds of land uses we should have in the future. And uh planners would then utilize this map and go through the rezoning actions to implement the future land use map. So uh I am a one-staff department, so I couldn't, you know, just apply for all lands that are not matching in the future land use map and apply for a rezoning all at once. Therefore, the school ap- appeared wanting to build over here in this property. And when we saw the interest of having something developed, then we had a reason for pursuing the area-wide rezoning for not just the parcel where the school wanted to come, but the whole one hundred fifty-seven acres to then meet the future land use map. Hopefully, that explains on how this whole rezoning came to be uh in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four.
Do we have private schools in our master plan?
We don't. We don't have any area here indicated for future civic uses or schools.
Well, and I think that's the important thing. Again, as we're working with this, it's focusing on the zoning. So it's talking about, okay, um, I mean, I was thinking about this of like we could zone sections civic, but it's keeping in mind that we would be doing a rezoning, as I understand it, before any sale took place as well. So we could rezone it and hypothetically, if the the sale could fall through at the last moment. So we would be having this property that would be rezoned in this nature. Re- again, like in a hypothetical situation of that rezoning falling through. Um, so that's why I think it's important we focus on the zoning, because things are liable to change always. Um, I do want to cor- uh correct, we do have portions of property that are future land use for civic, and it would be the increase on the north side for the Mount Pleasant Center property. Um, but as we know.
So I was gonna mention that, yeah. So we do have this section, hopefully, everybody can see my cursor in the regional center properties that was indicated in the future land use map as parks uh in civic uses. As you know, we don't, we're not gonna be able to meet all the land use classifications in this property. So this property will have to remain vacant.
That property has additional legal restrictions upon it at this time. Um, before I give the floor to Vice Mayor Eke, just checking in other members of the commission.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, if you had a comment you wanted to make?
Yeah, uh. Part of my question also has to do with the acreage that we, you know, that will be allocated to this particular school. Um, you know, once it's allocated to the school, it means therefore no taxation for that particular, you know, no particular, that particular, you know, acreage for, I don't know, maybe twelve years, maybe in perpetuity, maybe, I don't know, a hundred years. Um, but, you know, I also want us to bear in mind that a few months ago, we rezoned the property on, what is it, Michigan or Broadway? No, Michigan. Um, you know, to um allow for the construction of, you know, uh, housing, right? We have been talking about the absence of the lack of housing. So I don't want to debate this, but I'm just sort of saying, hey, we need to think about all of these things, too. So um Manuela, um, let's say, you know, to what extent have you looked into the possibility of, or at least talk to these people about the possibility of the kinds of housing that you've been talking about, you know, for for the community? How much conversation have you had? Because the focus has been on rezoning so that we'll have this private school. That's what I'm hearing, you know? So I, you know, can we talk about?
I can, yeah. So I can remind the commission that aside from the school development, as we engaged into the discussions to dissolve the PRD, we did engage with the other property owners, including uh Rick and Chuck McGurk that owns the property where West Point Village is located. So it's that larger uh property in orange here in this map. So that piece of property today has several apartment buildings. And uh they would like to build a couple of extra buildings where they already have underground infrastructure. So that's one uh indication of future residential developments for this particular area. And then aside from that, we were, um, I believe it was in twenty twenty-two when the city commission approved the the pilot ordinance, so the payment in lieu of taxes. We received an interest party um from outside of the city, a developer who wanted to build uh row houses for affordable affordable housing here in this location as well. Uh, that development didn't go through due to some of the restrictions uh in the state program for affordable housing. But um we did see that interest in the past, and I'm hoping that we can see an interest in the future as well for housing developments here.
Okay, thank you, Manuela.
Commissioner Perschbacher.
Um, we talked about this last year. We talked about the PRD. I was one that voted to remove it because we talk about housing and the lack of housing, and we have been given demonstration after demonstration about why we need more housing in Mount Pleasant. We cannot attract workers if we do not have housing for them. Um, the whole thing about the the uh Christian school, um, I'm agnostic. Doesn't bother me either way, whatever, but I'm not willing to discriminate against somebody about how they use their land. And right now, what we're seeing is that this PRD, um, it sounds like there's a lot of pushback because of this possible school that may go in, which I see as a red herring. It's not really viable right now. What we need to look at is, do we want to work with the planning commission on possibly re um redoing this area and rezoning it? That's all they're asking for. Do we want to work with the planning commission to possibly rezone this? We're not talking about a Christian school. We're not talking about the public school. We're just saying, can we consider? Can we put a motion on the on the table to work with the planning commission on November twenty-fourth so that we can discuss this with them and the property owners? Nothing else is coming from this right now.
And with that, I was going to ask if there was a motion on the table.
Yes, I motioned that we um set up a joint session for November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, the regular meeting with the planning commission and property owners to discuss alternatives to the proposed zoning map amendment Z twenty-four oh one for the five properties located at southwest of Crawford and Broomfield.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Perschbacher, seconded by Commissioner Bush. Um, let's see, with that, um, the motion is to approve the um joint work session. All those in favor of the joint work session, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion passes. I'll be at the November twenty-fourth. Okay. Uh, that brings us to item number sixteen, an added item. Um, as members of the commission will know, this is item, consider appointments to CBD Tifa District Board for partial term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-nine. Um, let's see, the commission, um, we are looking to maintain the CBD Tifa District in the downtown area, and we are working on filling out that board. Um, we have, our efforts have slowly moved uh from attraction to outright recruitment to get business owners um in and area residents interested in the property or in, excuse me, in the um board. Um, it represents a major investment into our downtown area. Um, one person I had reached out to, um, and who was uh very excited to be able to participate in this was Megan Bear for arts sake. Um, residents might know her best for the work she has done um organizing the um market for the arts in the downtown area. I believe for the, at least the past three summers, if not longer. Um, but in any case, um, I think she's a great asset um for um the community, and I think she'd be a do a great job on this board. Um, let's see, are there any questions or concerns at this time? Any discussion on this?
No, just as a member of the appointments committee, I support this recommendation.
Thank you. Okay, um, with that, let's see. I would make a motion to appoint Megan Bear to the CBD Tifa District Board for partial term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-nine.
Seconded.
Motion and seconded. Um, all those in favor of appointing Megan Bear to the board, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. Okay, that brings us to announcements on city-related issues and new business. Um, this is time for members of the commission to bring uh additional items to our attention or make announcements for the community. Um, starting alphabetically, Commissioner Alzaker.
Just a comment that um I was taking the loop around Island Park today, and I crossed over the bridge that goes to the baseball fields off of Pickard. And as I was turning around and coming back, there's two um benches that are like memorials specifically for veterans. And I thought that was a nice thing that we have there.
Thank you, Commissioner Alzaker. Commissioner Bush?
Um. I was uh first worried, but then excited to hear of the timing of the um Let Peace Rain event, um, because there is another event that day in our community. Um, and so if you really want to uh have a staycation and enjoy so much of the interesting things that Mount Pleasant has to offer, check out um Art From Our Parks, uh, Isabella County Parks and Recreation's annual event. Um, it's from twelve to four at uh Deerfield Nature Park. I highly recommend it. Um, it is a really just fantastic event. There is so many different types of performances, um, ranging from dance to poetry to um musical performances, different arts activities for everybody. Um, it's all free. In fact, they waive admission fees to the park that day, so you could do that from twelve to four. Maybe catch a little lunch break in between. Actually, sometimes they have food at arts, but I don't know for sure this year if they do. And then pop over to Let Peace Rain and have a nice staycation day in uh Mount Pleasant.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bush.
It's also home CMU football game.
Oh, my gosh.
Going on. Uh, Vice Mayor Eke?
Uh, Vice Mayor Eke, I um indicated earlier that um the Isabella County Human Rights Committee is hosting their annual peace event, Let Peace Rain on September the twentieth. It's a Saturday at the town center, beginning from four to seven, about seven P M. Uh, in the interest of peace, please, I am going to ask for indulgence. I actually would like to briefly say to Commissioner Perschbacher, I appreciate your earlier comments, but at no time did anyone here indicate, did I? I asked the question about consulting the public schools. Because Manager DeSens mentioned included the private schools. I don't, I'm not particularly interested in the denomination of the private school. What I said was, we needed to have equity. We needed to have representation. To suggest the idea of discrimination is problematic for me as somebody who fights for fairness, justice, who knows what discrimination feels like? To indicate that is problematic for me. I just want to put that on public record because, what, because of your comments. Okay, please. I wanted equitable representation. And it meant that if we're talking about private schools, we needed to also consider the voice of the public school. That's all. Thank you. I say this in the interest of peace. Thank you.
Commissioner Perschbacher.
Um, I just want to remind everyone that, um, you know, our schools are back in session. Um, we still have, um, beautiful weather to enjoy our parks. Um, if you are out walking your dog, make sure your dog is leashed and make sure that you are maintaining your dog as you are going through the parks, you're cleaning up after them. Um, I think that we have a lot of great activities that are happening in our county and in our, in our, um, city. Um, if you're unsure of what is out there, you can go to the Mount Pleasant Visitors Bureau or the Chamber and see some great events that are out there.
Thank you. Commissioner Rollins.
I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Sklitsky.
Uh, it's gonna be a busy day in Mount Pleasant because I believe, uh, Broadway is hosting their first concert on September twentieth as well. Um, but in the spirit of peace and Mount Pleasant became, becoming a city of peace, um, I wouldn't, uh, I have done some digging as far as the Immigration Trust Act, Immigrant Trust Act goes. Um, and some policy has been picked up, uh, some states and some cities across the country to where it is more or less a promise from the city uh, to support, uh, as residents. Um, so I, I would like to propose that we establish a work session to discuss, uh, adopting similar policy for Mount Pleasant.
Yeah, so if I can build off of that there to have some discussion here. Um, I think it's a very important topic, you know, um, as far, like, again, there's been a lot of concern nationally for a lot of good reasons about, um, threats to the immigrant, uh, immigrant community, um, here locally, um, throughout the state, throughout the country. That's been, there's been an air of concern there. Um, so kind of question to the commission, um, because this was something that was going to be bringing, I think, soon. Um, as far as the rest of the year, um, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, about seven meetings, uh, still. Um, and I know that this topic is something that a number of commissioners have expressed, um, interest in addressing, uh, addressing more, and it's something that members of the community have brought to us also. Um, finding out, um, we could work to set a work session on this, possibly in November, um, or either late October or in November. Um, the other option that's wanted to get feedback from the members of the commission on is we could potentially, um, also create a special committee. It was something I was looking into. And so my thoughts on that as a potential to explore there and getting feedback from members of the commission would be, there's a lot of different things happening, or there's a lot of different strategies being taken out there to, um, support, uh, support the members of our community, um, and in the face of changing federal law and federal action, um, and focus. Um, what we could do, um, is we could have a work session, um, in which case we will, um, speak with staff as, as the entire commission and have that discussion. Um, we could also assign several commissioners to have, uh, have, have conversations with staff that could potentially get a bit more in-depth, and then those, uh, commissioners could bring back, um, their discussion and policy recommendations to the commission. Um, this is something that, as far as I can tell, hasn't been done in a while, um, but I would be interested in getting feedback from the members of the commission on that possibility there.
Well, I do think it would be valuable to enter into a work session, you know, with as much information as we can. So however, yeah, so however we can gather that, whether that be a committee, whether that be directing staff, whether that be, you know, just assigning tasks. But yeah, I'm, 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 this has been on my list for quite some time, and I'm really glad to have the conversation be brought up again. And I, I'd like, I would like to see some action taken by the end of the year.
Okay. Other members of the commission, Vice Mayor Eke?
I, I, I agree. It's, it's, it's important. Um, you know, apart from the fact that we do have a large, or a growing immigrant population here, um, especially at CMU, I mean, I'm thinking about our international students who are panicked, you know, worried. Uh, students, faculty, staff who are worried. Um, I, I think that this is something we can take a look at. Hopefully, um, Director Paul Lauria can, uh, because if we're thinking about immigration issues, it's again, you know, not necessarily law enforcement, but, sorry, talking to you. Not necessarily law enforcement, but it brushes against, you know, law enforcement too. And we want, you know, a law enforcement, you know, um, you know, unit or mechanism to at least be cognizant of what is happening, at least, you know, let us know what is happening. So I would hope that we would include, you know, he would be part of this conversation, however we design it. It could be having him do some legwork, initial legwork, and bring forward something for us to, you know, look at what is, you know, available, you know, and the kinds of policies or protocols other cities have taken. And then we'll go from there to do, you know, you know, hopefully that would inform our work session. But I am supportive because again, it is linked to security and peace. I have been thinking about it a lot. So.
Um, looking at my calendar here, we could potentially, um, have a work session, um, second meeting in October, potentially on different discussion items. Let's see.
Maybe November.
Could look at November. Um, in November, second meeting in November, we'll have the joint session with the planning commission. Um, that could take a fair amount of time. First meeting in November, we have, let's see, public carrying on the proposed operating budget. Um, as the only large ticket item that I think we have there at this time.
Do it then. That would give him enough time to do the research.
Manager DeSens. Uh, oh, I didn't know. I, I don't know what that signal meant. I'm sorry.
My apologies. I also have noted that, uh, you have the, uh, city manager performance evaluation on that day as well, too.
Thank you. See, um, let's see. So we could have a work session, uh, on, on that. Does that November tenth feel like a comfortable timeline for members of the commission?
It works for me. It gives us enough time to get enough information.
Um, Commissioner Sklitsky, there is a specific topic you were talking about. It was, um, could you remind me of that again? Um, it would.
The Immigrant Trust Act?
Yeah, so additional research on the additional Immigrant Trust Act, it would be?
Yes.
Gotcha. So, um, I imagine we would also want just an overview of policies that we currently have in place in regards to, um, community members with, um, immigrant status as well. So if there is, so if staff could start off with potentially an overview of current policies that city has, and then if the staff could do some additional research on the Immigrant Trust Act, um, and how that could potentially, um, play a role in our community here.
Model cities?
Yeah. If you have documentation on that, Commissioner Sklitsky, could you please pass that along to Manager DeSens so he makes sure that the appropriate staff are able to take a look at that, to start their research off?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay.
We include model cities.
Um, so additional cities. I imagine that would go along with the research and everything that is being done. Um, so I, generally, um, when staff come to us, they look at what other communities have done, but yes, that would be the other question there.
Ask for that.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Okay. Um, thank you, Commissioner Sklitsky. So as I start my comments, I just want to say, um, off of several items here today, I wanted to thank my fellow commissioners for, um, really robust discussion I think we had tonight. Um, again, we dealing with a number of items that have had previous contention around them and a number of items that weigh on all of us. So, um, I think, I think we are moving in the right direction as far as having productive conversations and addressing, um, different concerns that all of us might have. Um, so I wanted to just again say that thanks to my fellow commissioners. Um, next, I just wanted to mention that, um, the Rotary Club of, um, Mount Pleasant, again, they've been, uh, celebrating their hundredth anniversary. They have put in a second arts installation within the city. Over in Horizon Parks, they have created a second story walk. So as you go down a path, children can read a, a book, um, step by step. Um, and then the other thing I wanted to mention was just one, um, Director Biscorne is in the audience. I just wanted to say thank you for the additional signage put up, um, for the, um, community gardens over in Horizon Parks. I think that, um, is really helpful to direct people to the right resources and addresses some of the concerns about picking that, um, people participating or having there. Um, also, I don't, and I will follow up on this, I don't know if it's included in the budget yet or anything. Um, but hoping to maybe, um, repair some of the boxes. A lot of them are starting to fall apart a bit and everything. So I'd want to just see if we could get additional focus on that. That's it for myself, though. Um, brings us to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. If you're a member of the public and have public comments you would like to give on any topic, please step up the podium. You'll be given five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Cindy Kummer. Uh, what is my address? Two nineteen North Lansing Street. I came, yeah, new, the new guy here doesn't know me that well, but I come periodically and talk about police misconduct, which happens seems to be pretty frequently in this town. However, after listening to your discussion, I'm gonna put my foot right in it and step in the big pile of doo-doo. Uh, sometimes I just don't know when to shut up, and I'm not, we're not talking about the police tonight because I want to talk to you a little bit about this land use thing, okay? Which I wasn't, I didn't come here for that, but after hearing the discussion, I'm just gonna weigh in on this. I was here when you all decided to turn down that other proposal. And I heard everybody's comments, not the, the new fellows, of course, but everybody else's, you know? And there was absolutely, and people are gonna be mad at me. Go ahead. I'm as liberal as any of you are, so don't be mad at me on that ground. There was absolutely discriminatory talk about public schools. I mean, private schools, that we didn't need private schools, we didn't need another private school, that we don't know if we wanted that private school to be there. And what I'm here to tell, I, I'm not a proponent of private schools. I'm not. I love public schools like any liberal person. But the job of the city commission is not to decide how you sit on larger national political issues. It just isn't. You all's job is to decide what's good for Mount Pleasant, not in terms of what's good politically for Mount Pleasant, because this is a non-political job. When you're discussing land use, the things you need to focus on, you know, and I know, I, you're all getting mad at me, I know it, and you're just gonna have to forgive me, but what you need to focus on is traffic. Okay? Noise. Do we need extra housing? You know, is this an okay place for this thing to be? Not whether we need or don't need public schools, or private schools, I mean to say. It's, I don't know how else to say this, but I'm just gonna be, I guess, a little bit mean or something. You're overstepping your authority. You're overstepping your boundaries. You're overstepping in turning down what you otherwise might think was a good proposal because you don't want a private school to sit there. Now, I was here for all that discussion, and so you, you can't tell me that those things weren't said because I heard them all. If, that's just not your job. Okay? I'm as liberal as it gets. I love public schools. But this idea that you bring a public, the public school representative to sit in on a meeting to determine whether or not a piece of land ought to have a private school on it, uh, that's just, that's not right. Okay? That'd be like if I was trying to take out a, 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 a bar license. What do you call it? A liquor license, okay? Would you invite the bar across the street to sit on, on that meeting, my supposed competitor? Would you say, you know, hey, whoever, Marty, come and talk to us whether you think Cindy ought to get a liquor license or not? You know, that, that's just nuts. I, excuse me, but it's not his business. It's yours, and it's not the public school business, as much as I love public schools. Whether or not a private school should sit in Mount Pleasant or where it should sit, it's not their concern. So I apologize a millionfold, but I just had to say it because sometimes something gets under your craw and you gotta get it out. Thank you. I'll be back next time to talk about what I originally came to talk about.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to give public comments on this time? Is anyone on Zoom? Any emails? Okay. This time I'm going to close public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. See, we have one work session this evening. It's item number seventeen, the work session to consider potential fire code updates. Um, before we do that, um, is there interest in taking a brief recess?
Yes, five minutes, please.
Okay. It is eight fifty right now. We will stand at recess and resume at eight fifty-five. Work session to consider potential fire code updates. I'm going to start with manager sense to tee us up and then hand it over to yourself. Thank you for being here.
The city commission was asked to hold this work session this evening to provide staff direction regarding a proposed update to the fire code. Updating the fire code has its benefits as well as its drawbacks. Staff has outlined a number of major changes in the 2021 fire code. The memo is in your city commission packet. Question before the city commission this evening is, are there any concerns with updating the fire code as proposed by the fire chief, which includes the entire code as well as its appendices? Does the city commission wish to exclude anything from the code? It was pointed out that the current high, multifamily, high-rise buildings such as those owned by the housing commission would need to comply and retrofit their existing buildings. One thing to consider is that future new developments would also need to apply with the code, which could also increase costs for new housing developments. On, and are there any questions for the city attorney's office? If so, Courtney Agusa from Foster Swift is here to provide any clarity on any legal questions that you have. With that, we do have our Lieutenant Brad Depker here to take us through the work session this evening and to answer any questions you have particularly regarding the code.
So my name is Brandon with the fire department, lieutenant fire marshal. I have a brief slideshow we can go through. Very similar to last, just kind of refresh your memories on that stuff and then go from there. So obviously, we're going to talk about the 2021 IFC fire code. So the cycle's every three years. Question was asked last time about why not 2024? I think that was answered pretty well, and that's still kind of in debate to get to that. Our current 2021 building code in Michigan supersedes the fire code in all ways. And this adoption would align those codes together. These code changes address fire alarm systems, sprinkler systems, emergency access and evacuation procedures, hydrant placement, and then hazardous materials and emerging technologies. We talked about appendices M, which is the retrofit sprinkler for existing high-rise structures. And I talked about the alignment. And then we've reviewed these, as Chief Lobzinger said, there's over 200 changes from 2012 to 2021. Those notable updates for us are the processing and extraction facilities or agricultural growth facilities in town. That's chapter 39. We have the mobile food preparation vehicles, trucks and trailers, which are growing in our town. And the carbon monoxide detection requirements for existing hotels and motels. And the, some units can use the battery operated systems. There are exemptions to that rule, meaning if they have a furnace immediately adjacent to the area where people would sleep, then they would have to have that tied into the system. Or if there's any chase ways, meaning ventilation shafts, those types of things where carbon monoxide could travel to that area where people are sleeping. And then, of course, the high-rise portion. To refresh your memory, they get 365 days to submit a plan of action to be approved. And then 12 years for the full completion of the retrofit of the sprinklers. And to define that high-rise building is 75 feet from the lowest fire department access point. So two buildings within our jurisdiction in the city. Fire alarm updates for existing motels and hotels. There's three that would be affected by it at different levels based on their age and what they have in the building currently. The energy storage systems that we have all over the city. From the EV chargers to EV batteries in commercial areas. Photoelectric solar systems, which are going on roofs all over town. We got to balance the infrastructures using those charging systems to support the grids, which are all part of the electrical code. And then, of course, Chief Lobzinger asked you guys to go with option one, which I concur with him. I think that's the safest thing for people in our city. And then he mentioned some grant possibilities and acts. There's lots of things out there, but all have different goods and bets to them and where they apply and don't apply. I think that the one that hits us most is the ability to there's a tax act where they can take the project and they can depreciate it over not a tax code person, but like a straight period is what was mentioned. So they can get more money out of that tax deduction versus nothing at all. And then, of course, the International Association of Fire Chiefs supports high-rise buildings having retrofit sprinkler systems due to the safety and fires that have happened throughout our nation and international as well. So with that, you guys have any other questions that were not answered in the last session?
Commissioner Bush.
Can you speak a little bit more on what the code? You know, complications might be for, you know, energy storage units? The, like, the charging stations and the, and solar, I was thinking specifically about solar, thinking now about how those may have been, you know, installed residentially without an inspection or something like that and.
So residential and commercial aren't a little different in the way they complement each other, but the electrical code for the state of Michigan is 2019 right now. So even that's further ahead than the fire code. So those still get inspected. Yeah, so batteries can be put in homes, those types of things without, without a fire code at all. What the fire code allows us to do is to look at more of the storage systems. So when you look at a storage system, it's basically a box with batteries. And those are popping up with the big solar fields, the wind farms, those things. And they pose severe danger to firefighters. And we need to make sure that they have the proper detection and alerting so that we're not opening a door. Arizona, the door was opened and it blew the firefighters through a fence. So just because of oxygen. So it's a little bit in the weeds, but it, it, it's more of the commercial level energy storage stuff.
Just trying to understand what actions people would take.
I understand.
Yeah. Have those, that information available, yeah.
Yeah, but, but yeah, the photovoltaic, solar panels on houses, all that stuff is all, it's all not going to go away, right? It's only going to become more.
Right, right, right. So you're just talking about having appropriate alert systems in proximity to places where there is energy storage.
When those energy storages meet a capacity, that's what, where the code kicks in to have certain requirements for safety.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Talking about this, you mentioned earlier that the building code supersedes the fire code. Could you talk a little bit about that in our plating?
So the Michigan building code and the fire code complement each other. So the Michigan building code has sprinkler things in it, has fire alarm things in it. But it doesn't dive down into the weeds. What it does is references codes such as NFA 13, which is the sprinkler code, and NFPA 72, which is the fire alarm code. All those things just kind of come together and keep us moving together in the same route.
Okay. And clarifying my understanding, of all the big changes that are done in the 2021 IFC, are the sprinkler systems the only one that are retroactive? Would everything, like, other elements just be like other construction or what have you be grandfathered in and everything at that point?
Yeah, so structures are grandfathered in. The other, the only other thing that would be retro is carbon monoxide detection for hotels, motels, and some of the fire alarm requirements for hotels in the city. We don't have one that hits that in the city for the under three stories, more than 20 units. So we don't have, we don't have one that doesn't have a fire alarm system today in the city of Mount Pleasant.
Vice Mayor.
Am I to understand, okay, given your presentation and Lobzinger's presentation, my understanding is that the current code that we're using, I don't want to say it's obsolete, but it is not in compliance with current international fire code. Is that what I'm hearing from you?
Yeah, the current code for the international, 2024 for fire.
No, but the one that is used, which is 2021.
2021 is the one that's kind of published out there that is the accepted one that's been tested and trued in a lot of places.
Okay, so all you're asking us to do or what, you know, this is proposing right now is that we vote to accept this so that, you know, we will be in compliance with the 2021 code. And also, this will address gaps in the safety protocols that we have.
Yes, yeah, it'll provide more safety for those people in those high-rise structures.
And you're saying that there are two of them that are impact, you know, you know, that have to attend to these changes. Okay, I'm, I'm good. I am good. Thank you.
Commissioner Perschbacher.
I do want to remind the commission that this is a work session and we do not do a motion. We just give direction. So we're not voting on anything tonight. We're giving a direction.
Okay. Thank you.
Other members of the commission, questions, discussion items on this? Commissioner Al Sager.
Well, it sounded before like updating to the new one would be a good idea, but then there was discussion about this amendment. Or appendix M. Do you see any problems with including or excluding that?
Well, excluding it would put people in high-rise structures that are not fully sprinkled at high risk. And we have both of those buildings have people in them that really were not designed to be in there that are bedbound because of healthcare changes and such, which is by their right to be in their home, and I appreciate that. But self, self, excuse me, self-preservation is important in a high-rise building because it just takes time.
Thank you.
If I remember correctly, from Chief Lobzinger's presentation, last time the code was updated, appendice M was excluded.
In 2012, was our, is our current code.
And it was excluded at that point in time?
Commissioner Rollins, any questions? Vice Mayor.
So option one includes the appendices that were excluded, and that's the one that Chief Lobzinger and you are recommending.
Correct.
And you're asking us, you're suggesting that we support that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, yeah, I hear you. I've got you.
I'd be remiss if we had our attorney drive all the way out here without any questions. So the one question I have, again, as it's been discussed, like member, members of the community who are in these buildings, like, because we're not updating, don't have most updated code, could be a higher risk for just safety concerns. I guess, why, like, why is there the option to update or not to update? Or could you, could you speak to that vein of question there?
The benefits or pros and cons of adopting the newer code? I think it's just like any other ordinance, right? You monitor what the needs of your community are. In this case for fire, and please correct me if I'm wrong, you have the advantage of an organization, the ICC, doing a national polling of various communities and fire stations, et cetera, and seeing what the best avenues are for fire protection, right? And they gather that data and that information, and they create these essentially model ordinances for you that you can just plug into your system that gives you the best advantage to protecting your community. So I mean, from my perspective, I've seen them adopted. I've seen some modifications here and there, maybe just to, I, I think we were joking earlier about and I'm, this is just a joke. You know, like the jaws of life, you know, maybe one community can afford one and one can't, and maybe this references that, right? So there are some, there's some wiggle room for modification to fit and suit your community. But the point is, or the gist of it is to give you the fullest and safest advantage for your community by adopting it as is with those slight modifications. So hopefully that helps. Does that help?
Yeah.
Sorry, that's a bad example. Jaws of Life was the only thing that came to me.
No, so it's a, it's a tool that is accessible to us. So if we determine that we are going to in fact purchase the jaws of life because it'd be useful and accessible to us. So the question is, like, it's determining if this is a tool that's accessible to us, essentially. Okay.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Al Sager.
I'm looking at one of the pages in our packet and is discussing how the sprinkler, sprinkler system in existing high-rise buildings, that's where, you know, you've listed two of the high-rises, and it gives a compliance timeline, right? But then for the fire alarm system upgrades, it lists some different hotel motels, and it doesn't give a timeline. Do they have the same timeline?
No, there's not the same timeline, and everybody's going to be able to do that differently based on how much money they have. We, as Chief Lobzinger indicated, we're not here to put undue burdens on people. And I think working together, creating that plan, no matter what it is, if it's a new fire alarm system, if somebody wants to upgrade their fire alarm system because of alarm problems or whatever, we work together to create a plan for them and get it the best way we can get it for the residents, the constituents, the visitors, all that stuff.
Thank you.
I, I have to ask, do these buildings or the owners of these builders know, have they been informed that they may have to update their fire code or they, you know, a, a, address, you know, this?
In 2012, they were, and they, they had the knowledge then. And it's, I'm not sure if millennia is still the same owner or not.
Okay.
But.
Yeah, because I, I think I recall Chief Lobzinger saying that maybe at least one or two that they did know, and, and, and he said something about them having about 20 years or so to address it, and they haven't.
Yeah, it's already been 12 years since 2012, right? So another 12 years is 24 years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One of the buildings, the Riverview Apartments, if I'm not mistaken, that's just down the corner from us. I get the names of things mixed up sometimes, but that's Housing Commission, which is a subsidiary subsidiary of the city of Mount Pleasant. They're created by city authority. Have there been conversations from them brought to city staff about any of this at this point?
Not at this point, no, just given it wasn't entirely clear which direction the city commission wanted to go in. You'll see in the memo that is in your city commission packet, there is the recommendation for scheduling public hearing, at which time we would make sure that they are aware of this.
If, since the one building
If, since the one building is owned by the Housing Commission, ultimately owned by the city of Mount Pleasant, if we chose not to upgrade the sprinkler systems and have them retroactively fit, would we be liable if something happens in the future?
I, I'm not gonna, I don't wanna say definitively whether there would be liability within the community, but I do think, just like any other health and safety regulation, if we're aware that we could be doing better, then we owe a responsibility to our community to enforce things accordingly, right? I mean, I, I thought about a better example after the jaws of life, but I mean, think about seat belts, right? I mean, it just, those didn't exist before, we were super, you know, fast and loose with seat belts, and then they became enforceable because it's a safety mechanism. It's kind of inconvenient, you know, right, probably in the early stages of manufacturing, but now we're just accustomed to them. So I think if we have that tool available, we have a due diligence to our community to enforce accordingly, so.
Other members of the commission, yeah?
It, it sounds like we're all leaning towards updating and not removing any appendix M, just taking the whole thing. That's what it sounds like we're leaning towards.
I would agree with that. My, my biggest thing is I, I do wanna hear a little bit from, like, obviously, anyone who's gonna be asked to pay a lot of money is gonna probably throw up some reservations about, like, doing updates or anything. But I do wanna hear, I'm interested to hear what, especially the most affected, the high-rise buildings and their, their ownership has to say, that is something I'd, I'd like to know more about. But I do think, yeah, I think we're all leaning for. Yeah, public hearing, yeah. So in any case, yeah, I think we're moving towards that public hearing. Other questions, concerns, comments at this time?
No.
No, okay. Thank you so much for coming and speaking with us this evening. It was great.
Thank you.
All right, that's the end of our work session this evening. There being no further business before the, before the commission at this time. I will say we are adjourned at nine fifteen.
Thank you.